None, I move for motion in the seconds, please.
Lester.
Does all, thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, they're carried, a couple communications.
Receipt of summons and complaint in the matter of Reverend Justin Blower et al. Versus Kevin P. Bruin, New York State Police Superintendent et al. Additional municipal registration and attendance is needed. Livingston County is partnering with the Geneseaf and Gears Lakes Regional Planning Council to assist the county in being designated a clean energy community for the nicer to clean energy communities program by holding five virtual training sessions on clean energy topics throughout the month of November. Please see the flyer on your desk for dates and contact Joe Gunther in planning for additional information.
Thank you, we have two local laws to be introduced. Ian, you will please number one.
Yeah, the first local law is something perhaps you're familiar with at the town level, at the county level, since the introduction of the tax levy cap law, we have not had to employ this particular local law, but in the possibility that we may have to override this year, it's still a may, it's not a will, this does include authorization to have the board override the tax levy and follow the laws of the tax cap. So this does set up a local law, set up a public hearing, it would be on the 16th of November, we would have a separate public hearing to discuss that if we indeed do need to override the tax levy limitations. We don't have the ability to utilize the entirety of our carryover from the previous year because we actually went down last year, so the portion that we can carry over plus the small inflation factor probably will not be enough for the total levy impact this year, so in the event that it's not, we are covered by doing the override.
Thank you, the second one, please, Ian.
This particular local law implements an adjusted community development plan from Livingston County laws to your guidance based upon the population count of police persons. That plan will create a consultation with the state department of education and provide various institutions of voting power for the overall.
Given the abstract of claims to be considered?
Mr. Chairman, I move this abstract of claims and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Matt. Are there any questions on the abstract of claims? Eva, Caladonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Antles, Nande, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York.
I seventeen oh one, absent three oh eight, adopted.
Next, we have the wishes of the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's merely.
I didn't hear my name.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution, ask for unanimous consent.
No? Oh.
Oh, great. I'm reading something that I see an error and that's why it would bother me, okay. We'll get to what we're supposed to be doing. Privilege of the floor to David Terry, Veterans Service Agency Director, and he'll give us a departmental update, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rock.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Yeah, no, good afternoon.
So, in years past, you guys have probably been used to seeing my office, the lounge slides, they did use the nice charts and numbers, everything that makes it in our office. So this year, I'm going to kind of change the direction a little bit on my department's presentation, and I want to talk about a few things, and I want to talk about a couple of things that each and every one of you should be very drawn up and will find out in just a moment. So I want to talk about, first of all, since I became the director of the department head, I've only been here like a couple months in this position, but oh, since I've been here, I've been deputy here for five years. I want to talk about something that occurred that normally doesn't happen in our office, but has happened quite a bit, and that's our three Hs. And since I became by myself in the office as the veteran service officer, if I get one of these, what we call the three Hs, I have to stop everything that I'm doing, and this takes priority. And since I became the director, I have had three homeless veterans, two housebound veterans, and two hospice veterans, that has taken a lot of my time in the aspect, so it has put a little damper on me trying to hire someone to get more help in the office, I had to put that to the side for a little bit, and this took up a lot of my time, and I think I'm back into the rhythm of things, to where hopefully soon I'll have additional in my office, have a veteran service officer. Also, on August tenth of this year, Sergeant First Class Heath Robinson honoring our promise to address comprehensive toxic act assigned to the law. Most everybody knows that as what they call the PACT Act, and that is all about contamination. So all of you have seen the advertisements, commercials, radio messages about Camp Lejeune water contamination. This PACT Act is the biggest law that has changed from the VA in over thirty years, and it opens up the parameters to everything related to toxins. Your Vietnam veterans, they added more things to the presumptive exposure list to Agent Orange, and also in years past, when a Vietnam veteran applied for a benefit and was denied because the VA said you weren't around Agent Orange, that went away. So veterans that have applied in years past should now reapply for benefits. And what this has done, when this came out in August of this year, exploded my phones, the call volumes have increased, the appointments have increased in that nature, so I'm trying my best to keep on top of those. I will say this much, another thing that has happened, I have, we do have cousin with us, and it's my secretary, our administrator, I have Sarah McDonald with us, we recently made her full time, and she has been absolutely phenomenal at managing veterans' expectations over the last couple of months with all these changes, and it's been really phenomenal making the office look slowly. So Sarah, if you don't mind, I actually had a big call here, she doesn't know I'm doing this. I have an office of one, so I can do this, but this is just my appreciation, I just wanted to say thank you for all your hard work, this is my chance to enjoy working in our office, so. In addition, I've also had two, educated two court cases with veterans.
Senator Parker, Senator Parker in the eye.
I know, yeah. So I've had two court cases that I've done, and also I currently have two hundred and sixty open claims out of my office. So what that means, I have about two hundred veterans that constantly want to know what's the status of my claim, what's going on, so I'm keeping really, really busy on top of everything. So those are my stats, that's what I'm going to tell you for my stats for today. We have about thirty nine hundred veterans, just over thirty nine hundred veterans in the county, and we have over nineteen hundred on benefits through our office. And that's kind of the stats of where we are in the office, so I'm going to talk about a couple of things that are dear and near to my heart, that I'm really excited about, and hopefully won't take too much more of your time. Well, Operation Green Lights, you passed this at the last board meeting, we're doing Operation Green Light from October twelfth through November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and I wanted to talk to you a little bit about Operation Green Light, just in case if you don't know exactly what's going on and what it's about, and where it went and the direction of it. So, pretty much the Green Light is a term that we use to create forward movement, it's something that can relate to every branch of the military service, so we started Operation Green Light here in Livingston County that you guys approved last year. It's locally established, what we wanted to do is take one simple action of changing one light green to shine on the conversation of veterans regarding their recognition and valued members of our county. And when we did this, we knew this could grow, but what I didn't know is how much this was going to grow in one year. And this allows veterans to see that someone physically took an action on their behalf, so it makes it a green light on a porch at a business, on a county building, and they see that green light, they know they did something on their behalf rather than just saying, "Thank you for your service." So I think that's a touch on the veteran's standpoint. So what had happened is, we got it approved here at this board last year, there's a bunch of acronyms I'm going to use here, so we took it to the New York State County Veterans Service Officer Association. Jason and I were sitting in our office when we were first talking about Operation Green Light, he had ideas, and I said, "Well, let me put in a flyer for you," so we put a flyer together, and he was able to run the presentation, taking into these organizations on what we wanted to do. When we took it to the county, so our county courthouse was the first one that up in green, when we took it to the county organizations, Monroe County jumped on board and says, "Wow, that's pretty great." So, they lit up the airport last year in green, in addition to that, is one of the aspects from it, so when we saw that the airport was going in green, we were like, "Wow, this is pretty cool." So, the county organization, it's now still served as part of other committees or as the president of the board, took it to NICE Act, and NICE Act ran with them, and then put it across the state. So, if you know, last year on Veterans Day, Albany was lit up in green on the state building, and also Times Square was lit up in green on Veterans Day, something that we started here and jumped the seal from this other day. So NICE Act wasn't done with them, they took it to the National Association of Counties, and NACO made this as part of their platform this year, and it says, "Wow, this is pretty incredible." And so they connected to an organization called NACO VSO. Ironically enough, the National Association of County Veteran Service Officers is the organization that I use for my accreditation, and lets me to be a veteran representative, so I already have a good relationship with NACO VSO, and most of my claims that I do is on behalf of NACO VSO representing them. So, in this whole process, it turned around, NACO teamed up with Amazon to make green lights available across the counties in this country, so green lights to be made accessible. In one year, something that started here, here's another shining example of Livingston County, leading the way, this gone to a national event, and that national event is being recognized the week of Veterans Day, November seventh through the thirteenth, is when the country recognizes Operation Green Light. I wanted to do it, just like we did last year, a little bit longer here, and this is my purpose of why we started it here in October. So we have from today until November seventh, to show the rest of the world, or the rest of the world, sorry, the rest of the country, that this started here, and the NACO site has a place where we can attach pictures to it, and you could say whoever's putting up a green light, or you could show off your green lights and everything of that nature, here's a chance for us, from November seventh, we can shine. I already took a picture of our county health department early this morning, and it was dark, and they have their statues in front of the health department, and one of them has a little seal, so I was going to post it on our website, saying the seal of approval of Livingston County goes green for veterans. All kind of things that we can do to really shine what we've done in our county, and that is thanks to you and your support and what you have accepted from what our office has suggested, and I greatly appreciate it. A long time ago, I used to have a ball cap that had the little hands on it that would clap, it'll have it anymore, but if I had it this period of time, I'm re-wearing it, and I'd be clapping for it, so my appreciation of the board for this chance for the Operation Green Lights moving forward, and this is something I don't think we want to neglect. So thank you from the bottom of my heart. We also contracted with Veterans One Stop Center of Western New York, you met Bob, I'll put this out there just now, as you led the pledge of allegiance, they have, Adam Howard is their president, Trey Randall is their director, and Alyssa Vasquez, she deals with their community integration, these are the main people I've been working with in this office. And I want to say, once we started this this past month, we hit the ground running, signing a contract with them, directing our Dwyer and outdoor RX programs, and that's what I want to talk about for the remainder of my time here regarding this. So we hired Bob as our county peer support specialist and the other staff members I've been working with. I wanted to give you one story to just kind of acknowledge the kind of work that they do, and the Veterans One Stop is a group of veterans and staff that are about finding solutions, and I want to give you a personal example that I've had with them already. So I was in Buffalo last month for the state conference for NACO, or, NICE Act, sorry, NICE Act, so they had a segment that was for veterans, and I wanted to go there, and I'm like, "Well, I'm in Buffalo, I'm going to go over and stop on Veterans One Stop and see what they're about in their office and everything of that nature." So I went over there to talk to them, the day before the night of the throne, they were approved for the staff Sergeant Parker Board of Suicide Prevention Grants. They have over seven hundred thousand dollars that they got as a grant to cover several counties, that does include Livingston County. Before I went to that office, I mentioned that I had three homeless veterans in the last month, one of those veterans just came on my plane, and the veteran that I was working with, I had a lot of issues, I'm getting connected to services and stuff of that nature, and I'm sitting there, and I'm like talking to them, we're in a conference room, and I'm like, "Hey, congratulations on getting this grant, let me tell you what I had going on here, and I told them all the issues I was having with veterans." They just got the announcement of this grant, no money in yet, no nothing, you know how long it takes for money to get one, then you get the announcement of what's coming. And I told them the situation, and they said, "Well, you're veteran, you follow over the Staff Sergeant Fox grant that we have," so we're like, "Let's get it done." While I'm going from their office over to the meeting that I was having for veteran services, they had Instacart sending meals to my veterans that were sitting in the green light, and giving them nourishment and warm food, and trying to get them established with some benefits, and that just tells you what kind of action these people are, and really phenomenal that we were able to have them do our Dwyer program. And what I'm going to do is, I'm actually going to have Bob come up here and give him just the opportunity to talk a second, if he wants to, about Dwyer, his input.
Thanks, David, good afternoon, I appreciate some time to just share with you what we're trying to do, so, after twenty-seven years of this, sir, it was time for me to grow up and figure out what I wanted to be, and when I stopped by to see my county VSO officer, we just had a brief conversation, and he let me know about this organization that the county contracted with VSO Western New York for this program. So, as I talked about it and got more in-depth with them about what it was about, I figured this is in line with what I want. As a senior NCO coming out of the army, I focused on soldier care, and now I get to focus on veteran care, no matter what service, and it's all about helping that veteran whatever resource they need. I don't care if they serve one day or forty years, I want to get them connected to educational, financial, housing, career, whatever they need, I need to know about it, I want to talk to them one-on-one, in a group setting, however they want to be, and I want to get them connected to this stuff, we're doing a lot of great things. So, up there are some examples of what I've done, and coming up in the future, I've got some dinners, some breakfast, a lot of activities outdoors, going into the winter months, I'm moving towards the arts, so I have a photography group, pottery class coming, and a painting class coming, all free programming for veterans, they can come out, just go on the website, RSVP, they come out to the event, and you get them doing stuff, right? So, this is, this is a job, but I don't consider it a job, it's a passion mine to take care of soldiers and veterans, and I get to do it now in what I'm calling Army Retirement, so, chances are, we all know somebody that, yes, we made it home in our physical being, but they're probably still on the battlefield, right? They're not going to reach out, they're not going to come to my event, but I'm looking at you guys that know those people, to spread this word and give them my contact information. I'll go meet them one-on-one, I will give them the help they desire, whether it's just an ear to listen to, or maybe some shared experiences that I've had, and I can, I can relate to it and help them out of their hole, right? So, let's make this veteran community back together, big family, and I don't take any suggestions, because this is not my program, I'm the character here. This is your program, it's a veterans' program, so please see on the website, let us know what we want to do for vets, events, activities, I like to do programming, so one of the goals we're trying to do is to upgrade everybody's station of life, and/or give them a chance to change their life situation through certifications or education. So, if I can find a certification, I'll pay for it, I'll put them through it, whether it's LTN, whether it's welding, whether it's a trade, whatever they want, and get them back in the feet and moving forward again, so, thank you, I look forward to working with you guys and making resources for veterans grow, starting a wealth in this county, but we've got some ideas to continue supporting vets and getting some more programs out there, and I look forward to working with all of you to get it done, thank you.
Thanks, Bob. So I wanted to show you a couple events that we've done already, we started this month, this past month, September, and this month, we're doing new veterans' activities, and all the things that we have done have been by word of mouth so far. And on September fourteenth, we had a meet and greet with veterans that we did at Al Durant's Heartbreak Mount Morris behind our office, and we had some pizzas, and had a few veterans that showed up, and wanted to know what it was all about, because we tried to get their ideas and things, what was going on, and what they wanted to do in their towns. We had a scheduled rafting trip that's supposed to be a fishing trip at Veterans State Park, however, that day that we were supposed to do the event because of the recent falls and the water levels, we had to cancel that event. And if you remember when we did the Veterans Livingston County Monument, when we had to cancel the first one, many veterans said, "That's not acceptable, they must have showed up anyway and did their own ceremony." There is a certain resolve around veterans, when they heard that we had to cancel this event, they said, "Absolutely not, please still want to go fishing." So instead of joining the fishing trip, Bob took the veterans and they went to the state office at the ponds at the state, the East Sea, yeah, at the pond, so that everything aligned and come up. And they fished, and they went fishing there, and while they were there, they met two other veterans that were fishing there out of the ponds, and then afterwards, he was able to pick them all up for lunch and bring veterans together, and they had conversations, and that's what it's all about. We also had a golf classic in Amman, we had quite a bit of a turnout with veterans showing up there, we had three golfer veterans in Amman at the golf course, I actually participated in that one, it's the first time this year I actually got the golf, so I'm excited about going there. We also had a photo group that started out of Little Lake Community Center in Hamlock, and that's something that's going to be going on during. We also have the Early Risers Coffee Club started, and they picked different locations, and on October seventeenth, they had veterans here together from seven to nine in Ward and Bryant USA Diet, and there's kayak warning at Hamlock Lake. So these are some of the events that have already started that have kind of been behind the scenes, that were going by word of mouth, but that is all going to change, and this is something that is dear and near to my heart, that's something I'm extremely excited about. This is something I wanted to do since I was hired here about five years ago, we actually created a new website, so with the contract with the Buffalo staff, Alyssa, the name that I mentioned here, she designed our website. And so what we're going to do is introduce to you today, livecovets.com, that's our website, and what you can do for, this is what the website looks like, it is live now, you can pull it up, look at it, I want you to, if you can, put it out to your towns, on each of your desks is a flyer, a little pamphlet, it has Bob's card on it as well, but it has the website on it if you want to post it in your town, but we want to get this out to veterans, you're going to start seeing it this weekend advertised in the Penny Savers, it goes out to residents, so we got that out there, but it's going to be an all exclusive, one-site location for veterans to go to, to know about the events and stuff of that nature that they can be involved in for free, or any veterans' events that are going to be occurring, they can tell us about it, and we can put it on the calendar. For example, in addition to what we were doing for Veterans Day this year on the calendar, Avon School wanted to do something for veterans, so they're going to have a five K block race November twelfth at Avon, and they let us know about it so we can get it on the calendar, we want to get the word out to veterans that they can participate in this weekly. Starting on the second, for example, of November, we're having a lawyer dinner, and every first Wednesday of the month, we're going to have a dinner, it's going to be free for veterans, and some events are strictly for veterans, and some are for veterans and supporters. So what we're doing for the dinner is a veteran plus one, spouse, child, caretaker, can come to a free dinner, to where we can cap it at, for them to come out, and this first one we're doing is at the Village Inn in Caladonia. So these are, it's pretty exciting times, and we're going to have a lot of activities for veterans. for veterans. A veteran in Livingston County should say, oh, I don't know what to do around here. We're going to start doing a lot of activities. But as we're doing this, what we're starting out with now are things that we're coming up with and what we want to do. But we want to get veterans engaged and find out what veterans want to do. So there's other veterans that are interested in beekeeping as an ideal in the Nunde area, so they might be something of that nature. What I wanted to do with the website, so I'm just going to talk about the topics that are out in town. There's one that talks a little bit about the Dwyer program. We have a section dedicated to our Livingston County Veterans Monument that has our, the video that was put out on the monument. And they actually went to each property and took close pictures, and this is a small thing of all the properties that are at the monument that people can go to and learn about what we've done during the year. But what's dear and near in my heart and what impacts each and every one of you is the veteran that comes in and leads the Pledge of Allegiance. I will say, it is very difficult to get a veteran to come here and lead the Pledge of Allegiance, especially out of my office. And the reason being is a lot of times when I'm sitting down with a veteran, we're doing something specifically. If I'm doing something with a veteran, I could be doing their compensation claim, it could be some kind of benefit, it could be a tax exemption. But oftentimes, a veteran in my office might be talking about one of the worst times that they've ever gone through. And maybe we're way over a benefit, they applied for a benefit and they were rejected. And I have to turn around and say that the VA denied your claim. Oh, by the way, if you come to the county board, we can lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Doesn't apply with veterans. So what I wanted to do is instead of just trying to get a veteran in here to lead the Pledge of Allegiance, we're going to have a veteran of the month. And what we're going to do is honor one veteran, and it's going to be on the website. And I already got the commission of my first veteran of the month, it's going to be for the month of November, and I put them up there today. But this is going to be what it's going to look like. So we have our Livingston County Veteran of the Month. And this is Carpero Adam Fritcher out of Nunde. And he is going to be our next Veterans Pledge Vet that's going to come in next month and lead the Pledge of Allegiance. So one, I actually got somebody in advance. But when I could promote, we're going to have somebody recognized all month long. I think this is the first time that I got a veteran that say, wow, yeah, I would do that, that was pretty excited about it. And his bio is already up there. And then we can honor them as a Veteran of the Month when they come and lead the Pledge of Allegiance and get a certificate from the calendar. This is something I really wanted to do for a long time, I'm really excited if we can incorporate this, and hopefully veterans will get excited about this, and we can honor more veterans with these one this way. And then there we have our upcoming events and calendars and stuff of that nature. But that's the website. I'm really, really excited about this. It's something I wanted to do for a long time. And I'm really looking forward to the direction our office is heading in veteran engagement and not just being in the office and making comments. So we really want to focus on veteran suicide, and I think this is the way to go. And I think when we start doing these activities, we're going to see changes in organizations like the EFW and American Jets and stuff of that nature, that I think we're going to see a culture change, but that's my hope. We're going to see a bunch of different veterans organizations. Hopefully, as we do these events, the younger veterans will start joining these posts, maybe more engaging in activities and stuff of that nature, and we can do this to grow our veteran community together. And that's what I have for you today. So I appreciate your time and just wanted to say thank you very much. And we've got the best of it.
Thank you, David.
We do have some resolutions that could sit on our floor to talk about.
Declaring surplus property central services. Providing for public hearing on proposed local law C 2022, overriding the tax levy limit for Livingston County for the 2023 fiscal year. Providing for the public hearing on proposed local law number D 2022, updating apportionment for the Livingston County Board of Supervisors on a weighted vote basis. Providing for a public hearing on proposed Livingston County budget for 2023 pursuant to section 359 of the New York State County Law.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on any of these resolutions?
I just have a quick question on the weighted vote. I didn't think it was accurate because Nunde does not have 230 votes, like that information that's on there. I think I went from 99 to 98 actually, so it's all changed again.
Yeah. Each of the weighted votes.
Once the national law is adopted, it'll all be used.
So they won't go into effect until the local law is adopted?
Okay. This is just confusing because I don't think that's what we discussed before, but you know, whatever. That's how, how come I don't know where I'm going today? I was looking at that, surprised me when I found that big issue.
Okay.
Any other discussion on any of these resolutions? I'm going to take a motion on the second to bring this to a vote, please.
Move, Schuster.
This is not my second.
Thank you, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry the vote, please, yourself.
Avon.
Aye.
Cali-Gone.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo. Groveland.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Antville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York. I 1701 absent 308 adopted.
We do have some resolutions that are going to require a second resolution.
Mrs. Walker, authorizing professional services contract for the youth sports opportunity funding. Kelmum Youth Basketball Association and Glow YMCA.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution? Here, you all, please, yourself.
Eva.
Aye.
Cali-Gone.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo. Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Antville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York. I 1701 absent 308 adopted. Amending the 2022 Livingston County Budget Purchasing and Sheriff's Office.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. May. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution? Here, you all, please, yourself.
Eva.
Aye.
Cali-Gone.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo. Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Antville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York. I 1701 absent 308 adopted. Authorizing transfer of funds office for the aging.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. May. Is there any questions or discussion on this transfer of funds? Here, you all, please, yourself.
Eva.
Aye.
Cali-Gone.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Antville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York. I 1701 absent 308 adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign a lease agreement with the New York State Department of Education, access to VR.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. May. Are there any questions, others please? Here, you all, please, yourself.
Eva.
Aye.
Cali-Gone.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Antville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York. I 1701 absent 308 adopted. Authorizing a professional services contract for audit services, the Bonadillo Group.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. May. Is there any discussion on this, uh, contrary? Here, you all, please, yourself.
Eva.
Aye.
Cali-Gone.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York. I 1701 absent 308 adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following intergovernmental agreement for the Livingston County Department of Information and Technology Services, New York State Office of Information Technology Services, and New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. May. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Here, you all, please, yourself.
Eva.
Aye.
Cali-Gone.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Antville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York. I 1701 absent 308 adopted. Amending Resolution Number 2016-141, United Healthcare of New York, Inc., Optum.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. May. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Here, you all, please, yourself.
Eva.
Aye.
Cali-Gone.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Antville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.